All right, we have to move it and get done. That's dark.
I'm gonna call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. Today's February fourth, two thousand twenty-five. It is seven P M. We are in the municipal meeting room. I'll start with a roll call from the far end.
Um, Sam Picos with North Star Planning, uh, planning contract for town of Arundel.
Marty Kane.
Zachary Shapiro.
Tom McGinn.
Susan Roth.
Rich Canong, I'm the chair. And we have on, on the items today, uh, approval of the agenda, approval of minutes for January twenty-first, uh, two thousand twenty-five. We have time for public comment. We have two public hearings. Raptor Falls LLC site plan, a proposal to expand an existing business, and Log Cabin Land LLC Houston and Company, a site plan application to produce sea salt. After the public hearings, we have the same two items listed for pending business. We also have new business with Chad Bolu from Hillview Mini Barns and Solari Property Care and Excavation, a pre-application site plan. After that, we're all gonna adjourn and go home. Hopefully. So, I need approval of the.
Move approve of the minutes?
Oh, no, we gotta approve the agenda first.
Of the agenda, that's what I meant. Approve of the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth to approve the agenda as presented.
I've got a discussion.
On the agenda?
Yeah.
Sure.
If we can add in the, uh, sidewalk minutes from February first. For approval.
Uh, for the discussion?
Yeah. Well, it has the approval of minutes from January twenty-first. Can we add in the minutes from the February first walk?
Yeah, I'll second that. Wait, no, I made the motion, but so I, I will amend my motion to, to, uh, include that uh, revision.
And, and what is the revision?
Approval of the, uh, sidewalk.
The sidewalk minutes, okay. Sorry about that, Zach.
You're good.
It's what I get for missing the last meeting. I just forget how to, how to run it.
Getting rusty.
The chaos I left you with my news.
That was it. Okay. As amended, is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Approval of the minutes of January twenty-first.
Move to approve. Zach again.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Marty Kane to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
I have to abstain. I was not here. Abstention. Zach was not here either, so we have two abstentions. Four in favor, two abstentions. The next item is the sidewalk. Which Paul was nice enough to.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Which one?
Both of them?
Yes.
Okay.
I have discussions on each.
Okay.
I'd like to be added to the minutes since I've been present.
Oh.
Yeah.
On both of them.
On both of them, yeah.
Yeah. There's also a typo on the first one. Line above meeting adjournment. It should say Ms. Roberts, not Mr. Roberts.
Any other adjustments that you see? Okay.
Nope.
We will get you added. Is the.
So move to approve the minutes as.
As amended.
Amended.
As amended.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by, uh, Zachary Shapiro, seconded by Thomas McGinn to approve the, the sidewalk minutes as amended. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
This is an abstain.
Yep, it's unanimous.
Student abstains. Susan abstains. She wasn't there.
I abstain.
You should have been.
I'm sure everybody's signed in.
Yes, if you have, uh, not signed in yet, please do so, so that we can get an accurate count of everybody that's here. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. It is seven oh five. I will open the public hearing for Raptor Falls LLC. It's a proposal to expand an existing business located at nineteen twelve Portland Road on Tax Map fifteen Lot twelve in the B I zone. The expansion consists of a bumper boat pond, climbing walls, and an outdoor patio with seating areas as well as the associated parking area. The owner of the property is Raptor Falls LLC. The applicants are Clifford and Bree Gatkowski, and the applicant's engineer is Craig Burgess, P E of Acorn Engineering. Does the public have any comments for the applicant? Because this is their chance to just, to, to tell you what they think. Yes, ma'am. Or, no, if you could come up, I don't know if that, if the mic on the desk is turned on.
Yeah, it's on.
Just please state your name.
I'm Julie Peck, uh, Fritz's Lane, uh, Bay Harbor, forty Fritz's Lane at Arundel. I'm here with my husband, and we live directly behind Raptor Falls, Mini Golf, nice.
Julie, how do you spell your last name?
P I T T.
Thank you.
I've added, they're, they're all yours.
First.
Because the board doesn't, we don't participate in this part. This part is for the public to ask the applicant's questions.
But I do have to thank, first, thank you to the board for all I need to leave it. Thank you to the board for all of you being here and representing all sides. The sidewalk was educational as well as the planning board meeting video. Thank you. Much appreciated. I wanted to ask a clarifying question regarding the D E P stormwater P B R application. Is it because of an acre of land is being disturbed? Is that the purpose of the application? Or there more to the application?
It's because more than one acre of land is being disturbed for the media project that's in front of the board tonight. So that, that disturbs, I mean, that includes like all landscaping, uh, impervious area includes everything that has to be disturbed, and it focuses on making sure that erosion control practices measures are implemented as part of the project.
So I'll just put like a caveat to that question. There's, you're not asking them for a waiver. You're simply applying and saying we're disturbing more of our property than they can, and we need your permission?
Pretty much. The stormwater permit by rule is, um, it shows that the applicant tends to comply with the main construction general permits.
And then just a couple statements. Next, as it butters, not just on the driveway side, but that's the side that most affected now. I would ask the board to not grant a waiver regarding drainage, only if you've asked for one. If you haven't asked for one, then this is probably a moving point. So I would also ask that no wa- waiver be granted regarding a vegetative buffer, which I do believe there was a waiver passed. Okay, so, and then I'll just finish up here. There does need to be significant buffering and signage that alerts the park attendees that the park borders a private property. As I have filed one report with the local sheriff's office because of evidence of our driveway being used as a drinking and smoking spot, left behind butts, baby cartridges, and empty bottles. It's out of sight of the park, Route one, and our houses, but not the video camera. And my last little comment that you haven't seen before, but I'll give you that this letter. Our property is organic. We're trying. We are on the low side of Raptor Falls. Its natural flow or runoff without proper mitigation is going to be on us. Period. And then do you all want this? Do I give it to them?
Uh, give it to Sam?
Sam, okay.
She'll, she'll see Ann before the rest of us.
This is sad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any comments?
Alan LaBrec. All right. Uh, once again, asking the board not to grant the waiver of buffering. The ordinance leaves out all the requirements, you know, especially in B I district and parking lots. They're pretty stringent, and we're asking that you guys don't grant that waiver. Um, and we gotta also make sure that it pertains to the existing parking lot if they want to expand. Um, because right now, as we turn into our driveway, we have nice people with dumpster and back to shed and plus cars, you know, in the parking lot and people. Though somehow we got missed last time. There was a lot of things just to get the project path. Hope we work our way through it. So it is what it is. But we, you know, now that they want expansion, I think that definitely has to be addressed also. Um, and obviously the ordinance doesn't, says you can't cut, cut all the way to the property line. B I district is twenty-five feet. Um, you gotta have the screening buffering and, you know, in my opinion, you know, I, no problem. They want to cut the property line there, but they put up, you know, evergreens or, you know, sixty-five, whatever, a stagger. So we don't have to look at cars or, you know, people running back, you know, what, maybe a hundred fifty feet or so along our property edge. Uh, let's see. So, and then it'd be good to have those evergreens stagger like that'll keep people on property. Like Julie mentioned, we have had like bottles on our side. Um, she caught people on camera and stuff like that over there, um, a couple of years ago. Whether it was that, I would say from the golf course, which you were, because other people would be back there. Somebody knocked over our Fritz's Lane sign, stole the sign one night, but whether it was from their property or not, we don't know. You know what I mean? But it would just help, you know, making people stay on the property, you know, whether it's fencing, trees, whatever. Definitely don't want to waiver on that, please. Um, on the surface water. We'll start with the existing system. It was supposed to be twenty-five years and six and a half, well, within the first year or two, but, you know, it did overflow. It damaged front of our driveway a little bit. Um, repaired it. Um, it doesn't seem to be working because there's never ever water in this, quote unquote, retaining bond area, but yet the cylinder, whatever you want to call it, you know, they got the regular outlet. I've seen that flowing out. I've seen the, the top grate. It's flowing out of the top of that and nothing next to it. So I don't know if it was just engineering team or no, but we need to relook at that. I know they are relooking at it and enlarging and stuff like that, but right now that one failed. And what if, you know, they're taking all their water and bringing it to the edge of our property? I understand they gotta, you know, get rid of it and stuff like that, but it's putting a lot of pressure on our road, which is basically on ledge as it goes in. So I'm just asking the board to really look at their plan and on the, on the, uh, with, uh, surface water. Some things I don't like is, you know, like they're taking the parking lot, once again, bringing it to the property line, basically. Hitting a better riff raft, then directing the water to, to flow through, um, their man dug out, you know, twelve inch, like tunnels for it, you know, um, down to the collection site. I'm just wondering what happens if the flow is too strong, it runs over, that runs down the ledge, what it's gonna do to our road, which we've been putting, you know, money into every year too. It's now looking pretty damn good, you know, um, up to standards for, um, you know, the town and beyond. So I'm just not really sure, you know, that is good to bring everything to our edge and then just have to put little arms to carry the water. But then the other thing is you, you take all this water and you're bringing it to the, to the roadside, and we have their whole park basically coming down, and of course you have the regular water coming down, um, Route one. Sometimes you got double culverts and stuff like that. Now, when you meet our property, we got like whatever it is, a twelve inch culvert that has to handle everything. So I just don't know how, you know, that's what you gotta look at. That runoff and from the runoff above and that twelve inch culvert, and that, that's all the, um, state of Maine D O T wanted, you know, in there. What, I don't remember. It's ten, twelve, whatever, whatever they wanted. That's what we put in there. But we fixed the road, so we need to make sure that's gonna be, um, sufficient so we don't get washed out from, you know, the property, because they're taking all the water and bringing it to right, right to our doorstep. And then, um, lastly, just, oh, we've always had, um, some issues with, with parking, stuff like that. Um, I talked to Cliff about it, you know what I mean, and he put up some signs, you know, a few years back, and it, it helped out. They kept people off the road, basically, if you don't things that seemed to be pretty good. Um, I'm just asking that, um, signs, once again, probably got vandalized, taken, whatever. They're no longer there. They were just saying no parking on pavement. Yeah, but they haven't been backed up, that I noticed, and but, yeah, I just ask that be part of, you know, the approval process to, that they would have some sign, signage up to keep people off there because they are adding the parking space, but we don't know if it's gonna be enough. You know, it's not something, you know, they, they want people to stay longer and, you know, do more things. That's great. But, um, there was a time when there was cars, and it was at the beginning, I, you know, um, and, you know, but there was cars from their clubhouse or, you know, where they sell the tickets to the other side of my driveway. And anybody who knows that road, just getting out with a clear path, it's right on a hill, you know, you're gonna be paying attention. And so if there's any cars on the side of the road, it's a, a severe safety hazard. And so I would just like something in here, you know, just long signage, you know, so that people will know, and then, you know, Cliff, Bree, and their team knows if they see people parking outside the road, they have to address it immediately. You know, or we're in a bomb, whatever, you know, they want to have for a protocol to get them out of there, you know what I mean? Because if my daughter's leaving the driveway and she doesn't have a place to go, she's, we're not gonna be able to wait to call the sheriff and do this or that to get a car, you know? Um, so we just want to be able to leave our property safely.
We actually called the Lord County Sheriff's Department and have the leaders on site to validate this innovation. And they told this person, who else, that it's not our job to fix it on top of the phone. We're not actually supposed to do that. But there was a guarantee from the neighbor that they wanted to grab the bill, party signs, to the German people to park there, make sure it's better. So, I mean, nobody's parked there in two years. I think it's kind of a good point, but I'll continue to look at some.
I would appreciate that be part of the plan because, you know, yeah, whether I haven't caught it, you know what I mean? So I'm not gonna say that it's had, happened the last two years. I know it has happened in the past, and I just want to keep it from happening. I know you guys are dressing parts of cars, you know, by the, by the clubhouse, whatever, and, you know what I mean? I don't, I don't care. I just want it, you know, safely for anybody who's coming in and out of my driveway to be able to safely. That's all, you know, so. And appreciate the board's time on the matters, and please don't waive buffering. Just do it to the standards that, um, you guys have set forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan, can you spell your last name?
Yep, L A B R E C Q U E.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have a comment on Raptor Falls? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing at seven twenty, and we will go into the public hearing for Log Cabin Land LLC Houston and Company. A site plan application, a proposal to add a twenty-four by one hundred foot greenhouse to produce sea salt by solar evaporation from Maine Salt Farm. The property is at two-two-six Log Cabin Road, Tax Map thirty-one Lot three A in the R three zone. The property owner is Log Cabin Land LLC, and the applicants are Sarah and Janelle Houston. Their design consultant is John Isen- Einsidler? Did I say that correctly?
Close.
Close, okay. Does the public have any questions for the applicant? See, seeing none, I will end the, the public hearing at seven twenty-one. And we will proceed right into pending business. The first item of, of pending business is Raptor Falls site plan proposal to expand an existing business, and we should discuss the sidewalk with the applicant. We did mention it to was it your wife? Who was the lady that was at the, at the sidewalk?
She's an employee. She's an employee. Yeah, with Acorn.
Sorry.
Liv almost had a heart attack right there.
Yeah. No, I don't, it will, actually, because it's, it's not very good.
So my name's Craig Burgess. I am with Acorn Engineering. Um, I unfortunately didn't get a chance to attend the sidewalk, but I heard it went well, and I did hear that stormwater and the landscape plan were main topics of discussion. The plan I just handed out to you actually is a revised site plan in response to the conversations at the sidewalk. We are planning now to plant that, that property line with a robust, um, mix of different evergreens to really make a strong, uh, visual buffer extending all the way to where the tree line starts to go, the tree line starts to be cut within the setback, all the way past the dumpster location. So the intent is to provide a, um, a visual buffer along that entire property line. That plan, um, was prepared by a landscape architect at Acorn Engineering, and we can, we can, uh, welcome discussion about it, but we can go ahead and plan on resubmitting that plan tomorrow to the town as part of this project. If the planning board sees it, um, fit. Um, also wanted to talk about stormwater. The detention pond located here. Um, that, the, the overall square footage of that is actually doubled in size, but the volume behind that actually has quadrupled in size. So there's a significant amount of detention behind that. Um, there's a significant amount of detention now part of that pond design. We're reutilizing that existing outlet control structure, and we were able to get the existing models and the existing info from the prior engineering consultant that was part of the original proposal. And so we had all their data to be able to manipulate the models to predict exactly how that outlet construction, the outlet control structure would perform with a lot more additional storage. So the stormwater management report predicts a, a peak flow reduction during the two and ten year storm events, and then relatively the same matching the twenty-five year storm event. Um, so there, we did consider it as part of this project. There is a, a pretty large uh, twenty-nine space parking lot being created up above. So all that runoff from that parking lot is being conveyed to that detention pond, and it's being, it's being brought to the pond through a combination of, um, there, there's a catch basin. There's a catch basin located, or there's a new storm rain pipe bringing it to a new catch basin here. That catch basin outlets to a ditch that runs along the edge here and over to the pond. So we are utilizing that ditch. It will have a, a two foot wide bottom. And, um, I'm gonna revisit the design of that to make sure it's at least two feet deep too, so that it does, so that we can ensure that it has the capacity to bring all that stormwater down to that detention pond without overtopping towards Fritz Lane. So we're pretty confident that, that ditch and this new stormwater conveyance system will bring all the runoff to that pond, which will have quadrupled the volume to make sure that, um, it does properly detain runoff from the site. Um, understanding that the bulk of that site is, it's very rocky. We do know that runoff moves fast across the site. Um, so that was certainly considered as part of the stormwater management plan. Um, and then as part of the, we, we did revise the grading plan as part of the submission that's in front of you tonight, and, and the reason for revising that grading plan, it, it, it was pretty minor change. At the end of the day, it was just looking at trying to, um, reduce the amount of retaining wall on the site. So we, we just changed some of the grading to, to lose quite a bit of retaining wall, and where you'll see that retaining wall, um, no longer there is up along here. There was a retaining wall, a wall, but there, there will be a wall built into this, this bumper boat feature, so we didn't need that retaining wall after all. And we also reduced a little bit of retaining wall here as well as, uh, over here, there should be some additional retaining wall. So that revised grading plan was really just in response to trying to, um, reduce the amount of retaining wall. It does cost quite a bit to build, so, um, reducing the site costs. Um, we did, we did get the stormwater permit, uh, permit by rule approval recently from D E P, and I, I did send that to Ann at the town, as well as I provided it to the planner here tonight. So we do now have approval from D E P for that stormwater permit by rule, and again, that was for the creation of, uh, more than one acre of total land disturbance. As I mentioned at the meeting, um, a couple of weeks ago, a stormwater, a stormwater law permit with D E P was not required because we're staying under one acre of, of new impervious area. So because the project was, has been historically developed, we were able to take into consideration some grandfathering of some of the gravel areas across the sites to stay below one acre. So that permit by rule wasn't recently approved by, um, D E P, and it's now part of the project record. So with that, I'll open up to the planning board with, with any comments you may have. Thank you.
Okay, who's got comments?
Can I ask Jamie? Couple of questions on the stormwater. Um, in looking at your model, um, in twenty-five year storm in particular, you've got the, um, the Pond thirty P, which I am I'm interpreting as that is the ditch area upstream of the Fritz Lane Culvert.
Is that likely? I'm pulling it up.
Yep. Ultimately, in that, you've got some, some, I guess, weir flow over that, and I'm wanting to understand, is that flow over his, over that driveway?
So thirty P does appear to be that driveway culvert.
Yep.
And weir flow would be any overtopping.
So in the twenty-five year storm, it would overtop his driveway by about three quarters of a foot.
And that's, so what would be important to look at would also be the existing condition and whether or not it overtops in the existing condition, that's what.
And that was part of my follow-up and inquiry if that also captured. I know it captures, it looks like it captures all of the runoff from the property area. Does it go all the way upstream to capture everything up Route one that would be coming down that way?
Yeah, so the, the two models, the, the existing and the proposed are apples to apples as far as the land area that's being evaluated.
I understand.
And then the modeling.
Does it, does it actually, does the limit of your upstream watershed here go all the way up to the high point of Route one?
Okay, yeah.
May I, with you a question there? Would there be an extra turning lane put in and more pavement? And some of the limestone was recreated or reused? The water flow should be increasing from what it was prior to the right-hand turn lane at the season cottages. So if you're gonna have more flow coming down, your flow is gonna be increasing. But prior to you were, before you built, there was always water coming down from farther up on, in Fritz's spot. There was always a wet spot. And in Fritz's spot, there was always a wet spot when it had rained. Was that from the ledge or was that a a natural spring that was? Up there where I think it would be where your uh park is now. I mean, I'm going back when it was Fritz garage, I mean where it would water would run through. Back then, that was before you got there. But I'm just saying, is that coming from up along the the ledges or is that? From a natural spring that was mounted up there?
It's coming down from the legs. I I I don't know of any springs.
Well, I'm just inquiry.
Yeah, no, no.
You know, I mean, uh, but like I said, he always when it got wet. It would always flow. I mean, it was always water running down.
Yeah, I mean, I've been over there during numerous storms. Yeah, yeah. There's, there's no water, but it's not raining.
Would it be any better to put a larger culprit? To eliminate uh to eliminate any sort of down questions. On his driveway, so anything would run under or through the culvert instead of possibly. Overflowing the top. To eliminate any quote quote question.
I mean, it is possible, but I think the, I think. I think what the model, what we're, our data is showing is that it's a preexisting condition. Um and that and that looks back at the original development, not what's there today. That goes all the way back to how it was historically developed prior to Raptor Falls.
Yeah, but it was running over then. I mean, uh.
I I have a question for Alan. You just rebuilt that road a couple of years ago, right?
Yeah, it was an improvement, yes, yeah.
What was, I mean, you said that you just went with the bare minimum.
But whatever, um get D O T cloud, um you know, say highway and do, you know. Um came out, looked at it, not with uh we were moving to call the size, say, hold us to use. Even go bigger or small or whatever it was what they wanted. It had to do with the depth. Oh, I mean, I'm remembering, but if you hit the hot, you can't put a, you know, um. Honestly, a a two foot culvert in there necessarily because it would be too low. And, you know, the 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 flow and it just, you know, flood out or whatever, you know, then you done about a hit piece and whatever. They they won't put the size that D O T said to put in. Um so that's, that's the issue. So it's, you know, the end so like we got maybe. So, you know, but I'm I'm not a beta, you know, but my double culprit and. You know, I mean, something like that, maybe, or so, I don't know what the next solution would be.
Well, that was where I was going because when we did our driveway, it has a double culvert.
You probably. Yeah, but um you know, they wouldn't even let us, I wanted to actually extend the. Culvert so I could have my driveway on both sides of my whole pool. But they would go, I think it's a twenty foot lane, not that for a time, they wanted, you know.
So basically you did the most that they would let you do.
Yeah, yeah, as far as I know, you know, I mean, um we got a mo, what was it, what was it, any, you know, pretty, 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 you know, um, two or positive over, um.
Crush metal.
Yeah, whatever was it. I mean, but all I'm playing is um. That road was put in in ninety five. You know, I've been there since um two thousand. The road double walked out. If you don't because of the culvert or anything like that. Since you guys had a property, you had water, you know, water issues, you know, at the front, um and then. I'm just worried that you guys bring all this water away. It's, you know, like Marty mentioned that, you know. You guys do it all with others, you guys, you know, the change ahead, you know, you gotta look at all that water. You know, I'm not an engineer, but somebody's gonna figure out how we can get that from there, you know, taking them down from one.
Yeah, I was just curious like why. I mean, you already answered the question, but that was basically just my question was why you didn't either do a bigger covert or two coverts? To handle the water.
I never asked about two, you just, yeah, what we can put in there. And I know people go any bigger because they want it any deeper. Because they look at like, um, you know, how it how it made um fill out, you know, I mean, like a debris or whatever. Um I think, you know, part of my work down, that was the issue.
To the chair?
Yes.
Uh I'm sorry I missed the sidewalk. I was waiting for somebody to plow me out, but um I have a question since. There is some concern about. Uh overflow of the water onto Fritz Lane and onto people's private property. Is there some? Kind of agreement in the works in the event that damage does occur? Um and it is as a result of the runoff or the overflow of the pond or. Other circumstances created by your new development. I mean, have you put that in motion at all in terms of coming to? Getting the guidelines worked out, getting a baseline of. What that topography is like and how it behaves and that, you know, who is responsible? For repairs in the event that damage occurs as a result of this new development. I think something should be there uh to protect you and the people who live along Fritz Lane. That would be.
Any other thoughts by the board?
Yeah, I have a question, I guess.
Yeah, go ahead.
I wa- I wasn't here for the last meetings. I'm trying to understand. Though. Waiver is for. The ability to cut back basically the property line into that twenty five foot setback. Right?
Um well, with with our original submission, we didn't have any new landscape and proposed. Uh there was discussion about landscaping along that that property line. So we are gonna go ahead and prepare a landscape plan for additional evergreen plantings along that.
It's just adding things. We're not clearing that out and then adding anything.
There, there is, there is a little bit of clearing up, up over there, right to create the ditch that comes around the side.
Okay, so it's for the the water drainage ditch, basically, okay.
And there would have to be some clearing anyway, just for like the the fill slope kind of extending down. So that's why it made sense to do the ditch just because um. There'd have to be some fill already placed to kind of match existing grade.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I understand.
In the, our landscape architect did review the ordinance and I I understand she mentioned um. That trees for buffering need to be a minimum eight feet high. Um and I think that's what's provided in this plan. So you have a minimum eight foot high evergreen trees being planted. There's quite a few of the, quite a few trees to establish that buffer.
Unless I misunderstood her, she was talking about clear cutting to the road and then replanting everything.
Yeah, that's, that's why I was asking, but I didn't see that in the plan, so I went.
Oh, you know, she was, she was specifically asked about the road.
So there's still, there's still about thirty feet. So this distance here is still thirty feet or greater.
Okay.
And that's all some of those existing trees that you saw kind of beyond where the stakes were. Um although um the stakes were representing the edge of. The park and and then beyond the stakes for the ditch. It would be about twelve to fifteen feet of additional tree clearing. And then um the tree clearing you can see on this plan pretty much stops at the property line. But beyond the property line between property line and and the driveway, there's about a thirty foot separation there.
Okay. Yeah, I was, I was just kind of surprised because she was gonna, she was talking about clearing it all the way to the road. And she was asked multiple times, all the way to the road, yes. And it's like, I don't think so.
I think she probably hopefully misunderstood it.
Yeah.
Um but the intent would be that it would be cleared to the, to the property line.
Yeah.
But um we hope to establish the trees in that area with with a buffer.
Okay.
And you know that 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 you have to buffer everything from two. To twenty five feet from the edge of the parking lot.
Okay, we'll have to review the standard twenty five feet, was it?
Yeah, if, if you look, uh it's page eighty one of the ordinance, but it's. Six point five four C. A twenty five foot wide landscape strip shall be established around all parking lots. To provide screening between adjacent land uses and buffering for adjacent residential dwelling units and. Alan's place is in a residential dwelling. They've been there since before the DB one zone was created, before the BI zone was created. It was. I think it was what, R three or R four back, back then? With R three or R four?
Yeah, I mean, that one time was like first out of being route one.
Yep.
Was like Marshall and then everything behind it were basically residential. So that's how, when I first moved in, original zone was down like, you know, but, you know.
And I, I want to address the issue of a waiver in the same section. The planning board may waive the requirement for landscape area along the side or real lot of funding a non-residential use. When there's a coordinated design, if it's a non-residential, uh if it's a residential use, we can't waive that buffer.
Right, so there. But there needs.
I'm sorry, and they acknowledged that last time and, you know, the hence the come coming back with the the buffering.
Okay, cuz I wasn't here for that, but the issue had come up a couple of times about a waiver. It's not something that we could waive.
Yeah, so if I may, so you your uh plan that you gave us. Um includes some uh location of trees for the buffering.
Yeah, it showed a staggering of evergreen trees.
Did you say there'll be a more detailed uh landscape plan or or this be it?
That would, that would be it. There's, there's the table in this corner that shows the different species of trees. As well as the number of trees.
Yep, I didn't see that, but that helped.
So what I, what I was planning to do is coming back to the town with a plan that's stamped by a landscape architect.
Good.
Um as well as myself, a professional engineer for that landscape.
Okay, great. I wonder if there could be a note saying that uh it would be within the uh twenty five. Feet would be, would be buffered.
Okay.
Right now, it you show random locations, which is good, but in reality, there could be five or six trees. We just wanna make sure it it's a twenty five foot buffering.
Well, buff- buffering is a a minimum of seventy percent. Visual occlusion, so.
Which, which depends on the time of year. Both the evergreens. Yeah, evergreens is the way to go.
We could use, we could always use Tad's famous arbor binding.
So. The uh landscape plan will will won't be a uh a waiver granted on that. I I. I, we don't have.
Can't, yeah.
The right to waive that. Okay, cuz it's residential or better. Yeah, so that comes down to the um. Site distance, you still looking for a waiver on site distance?
We could go, I mean, the the entrance itself has been there for a while, it's working, um it has adequate distance. I can go out there and measure it and show it on a plan and it will be submitted.
It it's the same curb cut, same location, nothing's changing.
You simply haven't reevaluated it.
Right.
Um well, I'm gonna throw a motion out there on site distance that that we do not uh grant a waiver on the site distance. I um I'm sorry, that we do grant the waiver on that because it has not, it will not be changed for what exists.
Yeah, um just to start into sure, I think that one just doesn't uh apply, just you wouldn't need a waiver.
Okay, alright, so it would be in the um does not apply column.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so it's a moot point, good.
Thank you.
I guess the the only other thing that I'm concerned about is the water. You know, what's gonna happen? Cuz I know that. They had a, they had a great issue with the seasonal cottages when they went in. And they've got a ton of water coming and that's coming down, down through the ditch and it's gonna come down through your place and you're gonna add more water and. I'm just afraid of what might happen to the culvert.
Where uh? I I guess I'm just um. Use where, you know, it was a known water issue. And when they just rebuilt the road and just put in a single culvert, it doesn't sound like they. Did the due diligence to have them in here and put the proper measurements in place.
But, but, main deal. Yeah, it I again, it's, you guys have got some studies that indicate everything is going to be fine, but, you know. Yeah, I, I understand Alan's concern. He, he put it in. And built it to a twenty five year standard and two years later he had the twenty five year storm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My question, why can't they contain some of that water from back rockery? You know, they could do drainage, you know, underground, bring it to a pond in the back. They got eight acres there. They could alleviate bringing everything to the road by having a retention pond.
Yeah, good.
They are, well, they got culverts running towards the front, getting the water down, breaking it down this way. They could. Because of a sidewalk, obviously, they don't want to do a pump, that that's understandable, that they can break, but you can still do what pipes into. A manmade pond back there to catch on this runoff that it would alleviate what ends up at the roof.
Fortunately, while the, the rest of the property is uphill from the parking lot.
Well, but if you dig a pond, it ended to be built downhill into the. You can see, you know, ponds, you dig down and there is ledge. So, you know, I know there is some barriers to that, but. They said twenty four years long, I don't know, maybe they put a lot of water.
So let me ask, yeah, if, if um. I, did you say you'll be increasing the capacity of of that detention pond? Uh but it'll be quadrupling. So I think that is pretty much what you're asking. It it's a larger volume of. Of, of a hole that's upon.
See that uh. Probably uh cylinder or whatever overflowing, but without there being anything catching. So I'm just concerned that, you know, there's malfunction in the road design. That there is a line inside, but you know, um they mentioned my point about getting smaller, it's still gonna pull my driveway. So it's.
So Craig, I I, Alan, to your point, so are you going to increase the circumference of the hole or just the depth? Or a combination?
The depth is relatively staying the same because we wanted the outlet control structure to function as it was originally intended. So what we're doing is we're. We're uh we're building it further back, closer, closer to this area parking. Uh what I might suggest it would be like a, a condition of approval maybe or that these um. That the applicant have the outlet construct, outlet control structure maintained. Um there might be something in there that's clogging up one of the orifice. That's meant to control how the water leaves. So that's something that I could also take a look at to see if it's. If there's anything in there that's clogged because. That pond should really be holding water. And if if he's saying that it's not. Um probably something that just an engineer needs to take a look at to verify that. That the uh outlet control structure was built per the original design. And that there's not, it's not full of um sediment and debris in there.
So are you uh limited to the depths that you can make the pond? And or?
We're not, it's all, it's all blasted ledge, but, but there's, there's an orifice in the outlet and control structure. Orifice is just like a smaller hole. So it it, there's, there's a limited amount of runoff that can go through that hole. Before it gets to a different stage where runoff can start moving faster. So um what I, what I'd like to do is, is, is at. During the rainy season in the spring, take a look at that outlet and control structure to make sure that it's functioning as intended, that the orifice. And the sump within the outlet control structure is not clogged. Um because that should really be holding. That should really be holding runoff behind, inside the detention pond.
Okay.
Because we are adding quite a bit of volume to that and we do recognize the importance that it's, that's functioning as intended because that's where all the runoff goes. From the developed site.
This is simple silly questions. If the pond is gonna be bigger. What's gonna? Stop. Sally Sue from running into the pond.
I thought of that too, Marty.
Uh-huh.
I thought, I was thinking about that too. I mean, it's, you said it's two feet deep. Or is it?
It's the same depth that's out there today, um.
But I mean, it's bigger.
It's bigger, um, there is an outlet near the bottom, so it does start slowly draining from the bottom elevation. But it's a controlled. It's controlled, so there, there is, it is intended to build up. Runoff to a certain.
Well, I'm talking about in the driveway. What's gonna stop Sally Sue from driving into the pond?
Well, that pond should only be full when it's raining, right? Right, the, the pond is a little bit of a misnomer. It's a detention basin. And it's not a pond that holds water twenty-four seven. It's just, it's just a, a barge area that allows runoff to collect. And then be released at a controlled rate. So it won't be full. It shouldn't be full.
I was thinking of the word pond.
Right, yep.
It's, it's, it's supposed to drain within twenty-four to forty-eight hours.
Well, it's not like your bumper pool.
It's not holding water permanently.
That's why I'm saying pond and, you know, bumper pool, I mean.
I hope not.
But I said that.
Yeah, I shouldn't refrain from using pond instead of say detention basin.
Yeah, well, you, you know what I'm. Reverting to.
Any other questions by the board? I guess we'll wait to, to get the finished set of plans and make sure all the notes and everything else on there.
So I've. This, where, where drainage is a bit of an issue and we normally don't go down this path because a lot of the projects where it has been an issue. Have gone through. A little more robust stormwater management review from the DEP standpoint, but the permit that they've gone through right now, as Craig mentioned, was pretty much. Focused on the erosion and sediment control items. Um. I think this is a particular site that could warrant a peer review of the stormwater. Just to take a look at it, look at what was. Namely. There before, you know, when, you know, not to, not to scrutinize your initial application because that's already been in and approved, but to take a look at that. And look at what's proposed, how it's all, how it all compares and. Be able to move forward.
I think that's a, uh, that's a great idea. Do you want to make a motion out of that?
Sure, a move that we. Coordinate with North Star to. Contract with the engineering firm to do a peer review and stormwater. Plan and report calculations.
So we don't usually.
We have, we have some. Ann should have the contact information on them. We've got people that we've used in the past.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Jamie Lowery, seconded by Tom McGinn to have a peer review done of the stormwater drainage. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. We'll get that taken care of and get back to you on it. It's, I'm not sure how long it's gonna take. I'm, I don't imagine it would take too long.
So. I know that, I know that you had just made a motion, but would an alternative to going through the full peer review just to add another twelve inch culvert? And to update our model to show that it. Conveys the twenty-five year storm event?
No, I think I, I kind of like the idea of having the peer review done. So that we know. Uh, cuz if you don't have to do it, I don't want you to go through that cost, but. Uh, if they come back and say, yeah, you need to do it, at least then. Uh. I think we as a planning board are on better grounds to say, yeah, we want to have this done.
Yeah.
Or even throw out the idea. On your hat. Of putting another culprit in if it would. Leave a question of. Proper flow. I mean, uh. Because that'll show them, but I mean, uh. In case there is a question, here's a more quick. Or quicker answer. For the, uh. Question.
Yeah, Sammy, I'll stop in and mention it to Ann tomorrow so she can start looking for the, the people that handle that for us. Okay. Anything else? Okay.
Well, if it's too cold yet, it's start. Building the park lot.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Log Cabin Land LLC Houston and Company. Site plan application, a proposal to add a twenty-four by one hundred foot greenhouse. To produce sea salt by solar evaporation for main salt farm. The property is at two twenty-six Log Cabin Road, tax map thirty-one lot three A. In the R three zone, the property owner is Log Cabin Land LLC. And the applicants are. I'm gonna butcher this name, Sarah and Janelle, is it Janelle? It is, okay, Janelle, Houston. Houston or Houston?
Houston.
Houston, okay. Yeah, well, I was born in Houston. And when I moved to New York, I got into all kinds of trouble because in New York they call it Houston. Their site. Their design consultant is John Eid Seidler. RA. So we did the sidewalks. We walked out there. We saw the four. Markers in the four corners of the field. We had discussion about it and. They're gonna bring a truck in through the regular driveway and run hose all the way down to the, to the greenhouse, so there's no, there's no, uh, impact on, on anything. Does the board have any questions for the applicant?
The, the only thing I, I have a question on is, what type of footing or foundation? Would there be? Was it just gonna be a pole barn or type?
Likely to be just, um, uh, six by six or, or some sort of other.
Okay.
Flush out.
So there'll be, it, um. No slab or anything. Good.
So when the wind blows, we can pretend that we're in here. The Wizard of Oz and want you to go remember.
Open up the sides of the wind.
It would be anchored.
Yeah, he was, they were talking about some kind of windows. Uh, that they would be able to control.
Um, are there any, we were talking about it with the previous project, is there any, um. Buffering criteria? On Log Cabin Road?
It's, it's completely clear cut.
No, I understand the existing conditions. Are there any requirements to? That we would have that would need to?
I don't think so. I don't know if they apply because, um, there's no. It, it.
I don't see it as a huge issue. I just wanna make sure we don't.
You can't even see other houses from.
Right, across the road, it's not.
Only, and there's no pavement where we would. Buffer if it was a parking area.
It's just the building. I don't think the greenhouse is out of character.
Right.
For that agricultural. What's that? I think it says R.
Three, it's R three.
R three.
And so it'd just be an agricultural use. You don't have to buffer. A binder.
I mean.
Yeah, because right next door is the, uh.
Pinkle pot.
Pinkle pot.
Pinkle farm and so on.
Yeah.
And they're doing almost. And you can't even see it because there's a. Batch of trees. In between. Where they're putting this. In the pinkle pond, so I mean, there's enough. Cut natural coverage. I mean, in the winter time even. That's before you even get to the, the leaves on the trees in the summertime with the.
Yeah.
So I mean, it was natural.
There's no parking lot, so there's no buffering standards there.
It's just the birds. And the birds are very.
I'm thinking on that.
See it as a huge issue, I just wanna make sure we're not overlooking something that.
But are they robins?
Yeah, they are, yeah, they must be going, they must be Canadian.
No, I mean.
There's no parking.
Absolutely, I agree.
But they've been around all year.
Yeah. Yeah, we saw them, they showed up probably two weeks ago at our property.
No, they've actually been all, all winter.
Yeah.
But I didn't, I, I thought they were some other, uh, kind of bird.
Well, since you asked, Jamie.
Uh-oh. Sorry.
Residential screening, off-street parking and loading spaces for non-residential use in residential districts shall be screened from view. By a continuous landscape area, not less than six feet in height. Unwe, unless waived by the planning board in the absence of a negative impact on the butters.
She, there's no, no cave, no, no parking.
Oh, no, this is, this is.
Just the greenhouse.
Like greenhouse, but you're buffer, you're buffering and screening the greenhouse from everybody else. Unless there's no impact.
Right.
And then in this case, I, I would tend to say. Based on the neighborhood, there is no impact.
We haven't heard, don't have any. Neighborhood comments that are concerned about it.
What page is that on?
It is on page forty-six.
But their adjacent neighbor is Pinkle Pot, right?
No, their adjacent neighbor is daddy.
It's your dad's.
Or, or across the, across.
Across the street.
But there's really no, no residents right now across there.
Yeah, there's nothing there. So I.
I'm, yeah. But we could.
It's five twelve five. On page eighty-six, uh, forty-six.
So it's a grand family neighbor?
Well, they have to ask the kind of kitty.
Well.
Forget the letter.
I mean, what's the greenhouse? Ask for the waiver.
Across the street from there, there's a house. Is anybody there this time of year?
You know, I think there's. Yeah, where? You brought down the street.
I know, where the greenhouse is. Yeah, right across. Right there.
Yeah. I, I don't know where the driveway is.
Yeah, but I'm just saying it's, there's a house there.
Yeah.
But I mean, uh. It's not gonna affect them, I mean.
No, I mean.
So. Si, si, just, just to make it easy. If you were to request a waiver, we could then grant the waiver on.
Can I request a waiver on? There you go.
So, oh, um, so they're mending their existing site plan, they're not doing any parking, it's, it's really just the greenhouse.
That's it.
In this case, it's not.
Not even the driveway or anything.
Yeah, it's, I mean, the buffering requirement is not necessary in this case. They're mending their existing.
And, and I agree, but the, 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 the ordinance says that we can waive it. But if he doesn't ask us to waive it, then he's gonna have to buffer.
It's.
It's, it's, it's screwy.
Uh, yeah, that's same, yeah.
You know, it, I don't think.
Make the request.
I don't, I don't think that really applies to this, cuz this is talking about off-street parking and loading spaces. For non-resident uses, so which is, yeah, this will be neither.
Sam is saying it's not.
Right.
Sam, you're saying it's not necessary at all?
I'm, I'm saying it, it wouldn't apply in this case. They're not doing parking.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Alright.
Okay.
There you go.
So we don't even need your request.
Never, never mind.
Request back.
Okay, I did request that back.
I will bow to.
You can ask for a waiver later on.
At least we discussed it.
Yeah, you got it in your back pocket.
We've, we've had the discussion about whether or not it applies and it does not.
Okay.
So. Okay.
We'll go from here, can we?
We can.
Jump right in.
We can jump right in and, and give them the permit. We just have to read through the, uh, conclusions of law. Okay.
Refining it up.
And I have that right here. But we need somebody to make a motion. To grant the application.
I, I will make that motion to, uh. It will, is it to approve?
Yes, it's to.
To approve of. Of the, uh, the application.
I'll second.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth. To approve the application. Okay, findings of fact and conclusions of law. Site plan amendment, conditional use review. Houston and Company Greenhouse amended site plan two-two-six Log Cabin Road. The applicant is proposing to amend the existing site plan located at two-two-six Log Cabin Road. The existing site contains Houston and Company Furniture Store. The applicant is proposing to add a roughly twenty-five hundred square foot greenhouse on that property. To produce evaporated sea salt in support of production for the main salt farm. Site preparation. Will consist of permeable landscape cloth over grass and evaporation tables. Salt water will be delivered from winter wood fueled by truck and stored in two hundred and seventy-five gallon totes. And pumped directly to the evaporation tables. The salt, uh, the project is located in the residential R three district at tax map thirty-one lot three A. No other changes to the surrounding site are proposed. The planning board deemed the application complete. At the January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five Planning Board meeting. A sidewalk was held February first, two thousand twenty-five. Findings of fact, applicant Sarah and Janelle Houston. Owner, Log Cabin Land LLC. Location, two-two-six Log Cabin Road, zoning. Rural residential R three district, existing land use Houston and Company Furniture Store. Proposed land use greenhouse production from main salt farm. Acreage, less than twenty-five hundred square feet on a four acre site. Conclusion of law, the planning board has determined the application to be in conformance with the criteria set forth in text, in section ten point six point four in the land use ordinance as follows. The proposed project conforms to all standards of the zoning. District and meets or exceeds performance standards specified in sections five, nine, and ten of this ordinance. The proposed project conforms to all applicable zoning and performance standards. Number two, the proposed project has received all applicable federal and state permits. The proposed project does not require any state or federal permits. Number three, the proposed project does not unnecessarily impact public safety and fire protection. And will not create a financial burden for the town of Arundel. In the provision of emergency services and law enforcement to the project site and the neighborhood. The proposed project does not unreasonably impact public safety, fire protection, and emergency services. Number four, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact on the quality of surface or groundwater resources. No impacts to groundwater resources will result from the proposed project. Number five, the project provides adequate stormwater management facilities to produce no additional peak runoff. From the site during a twenty-five year storm event. And will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties. No impacts to stormwater management will result from the proposed project. Number six, the proposed project will not have an adverse onsite impact. Upon existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems within the community or neighborhood. No impacts to the existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation will result from the proposed project. Number seven, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact on environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, marine resources. Important cultural resources or visual quality of the neighborhood, surrounding community or. Surrounding environment or the community. No impacts to environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, marine resources, important cultural resources. Or visual quality of the neighborhood, surrounding environments will result from the proposed project. Number eight, the proposed project will not produce noise, dust, odors, debris, glare, solar obstruction. Or other nuisances that would adversely impact the quality of. Lives of surrounding parcels. None of the above nuisances will result from the proposed project. Number nine, the proposed project will not have a negative fiscal impact on municipal government. No negative fiscal impact on municipal government will result from the proposed project. Number ten. That the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood. The proposed project is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Based on the above findings of fact and conclusions of law, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the amended site plan conditional use review of Log Cabin Land LLC. Houston and Company as herein presented. The motion was made in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. I will send this down to the table. The notice of decision, we can all sign it. We're.
Want two of them?
Do we need two of them?
Yeah, one.
Yeah, okay.
Hundred and one for us, I mean, uh. Hundred and one for us, I mean, uh.
We have the plans already, right?
Yeah, last time.
Yes, yeah, we, we haven't had them from last.
Came last week.
Do they have a, a signature spot on there?
Oh.
Yeah.
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 The. Does Sammy have it?
We think each of them packets, we gave you all a site plan, and at the bottom, right, there's a signature.
Yeah, there should be a signature block on it.
There is. Yeah.
Oh, we still have that.
We have none here, there yet.
Okay. But we do have it.
Oh, yeah. They're the next item on, on the agenda.
Okay.
And while we get all of those signed. The next item on the agenda under new businesses.
Get the range back which way?
I assume Sammy.
Two of them.
Yeah.
I thought the plan was making its way out.
I can send mine down. Don't just send it, sign it kinda back.
Just one. Today is the.
Fourth.
Fourth of February. Twenty twenty-five. We'll have all the paperwork ready for you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Now, now, don't disturb that snail darter, whatever that thing is that everybody's was all in the Twitter about thirty years ago.
It's in danger. All right, yeah.
Just one.
The snail, I go.
We usually have one for the office. I mean, Patty.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, Chad Boldu, Hillview Mini Farms, a pre-application. Proposal to create a fifteen thousand square foot outdoor display area. The Hillview Mini Farms to display garages, sheds, park models, and cabins for sale. The property is currently utilized for a residential dwelling. The parcel is located at thirteen forty-one Portland Road, tax map thirty-three lot in the DBI, the DB-one zone. Audrey Wakefield is the property owner. Chad Boldu is the applicant. So you're gonna be, you, you're gonna have like, like park models of buildings that you would then sell other, other buildings.
There'll be park models, uh, they have a cabin display, they also do sheds, small garages, um. So it's, it's a display area people can come in and look at.
Will there be an office?
No.
Okay.
I will be, it's somebody, they will, they have their, their number out there. I will also be a contact for, uh, when the campground operation, uh, which is from pretty much May first, uh, though, October, the November, end of October, November.
Okay. I'm trying to think, where is thirteen forty-one?
Uh, you know, Hemlock Grove Campgrounds?
Yeah.
Right next door.
Right next door, okay.
Little white place with a barn sits back.
Okay.
To the north.
Right.
Uh, if you're heading north on Route one, it's on the right hand side.
Yep.
Yeah. But just, and just past Hemlock.
Just past.
Yeah, it's a little, it's like a little field section.
Okay.
That's the area. It's towards, uh, so I'm gonna utilize the, um, road driveway that the residential house uses, um, and then they're just, they'll pull into there, and then there's gonna be, the area will be to the right of that. You know, certainly.
Okay.
Right.
You're going into the field?
Yes.
Okay. You'll be, uh, so you're gonna pull up the, uh, park soil?
Yeah. Gonna put some hold the wall on, yes. They fill it in, uh, grab.
Signage?
I was just gonna ask that.
Um, I'm, I'm sure they'll probably wanna put us some sort of sign up there, uh, small sign, um. They are, they currently have an area, I don't know if you guys know where, uh, Lyman, or I think that's Lyman, um, by Jackson's Corner Store.
Oh, yeah, okay.
If you're heading towards.
The name of the place?
Hillview Mini Barn.
So we. Right, just, just before, just after you get up over the top of the hill and you come around the corner before the road straightens up.
It's actually, you know, with the, uh, what is that, Dollar Tree?
Yeah.
Right, right next door to that.
Oh, okay.
That's a huge, they got all kinds of, they've got farms in there and everything, so.
Yep, before you get to the turf field.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the, on the left.
I was thinking of the other one that's back down on me, on the other side of the road.
Yes, the, right there is another one over there, yep.
That one's the one they got moving up the hill from Bedford, I think, is the one you're thinking of.
Yeah.
At the shopping center.
Um, but the one, the, the one where this is at, one of my clients used to own it and sold it out, and whoever, they sold it to, turned it into a vape shop.
So, oh, yeah, there was a, there's a big house there too.
Yeah, the house is a cannabis.
Oh, no kidding.
Location.
So they're gonna keep their operation in Lyman. This is just gonna give them more visibility on one.
Yep, okay.
I mean, it's gonna also do, uh, I help my mom manage the campground, um, and like I've said, they, they sell, uh, park models and it's like RVs, uh, smaller RV display, so kinda trying to do it too further if we can, you know, possibly sell some, um, cabins for seasonal site for us at the campground.
Okay.
So that'll be an area that, oh, if somebody comes in, wants a seasonal site, it'd be something, well, I, you know, we have a park model here, they can kind of walk to look at and possibly do that too.
Yep. How, how long has that prop, the rental property been there?
Pardon?
How long is the, the house? Oh, I'm assuming that.
Thirteen forty-one Portland Road?
Yeah.
Oh, that's been there since, uh, that was actually my grandparents', uh, home. I currently reside there at home and, uh, that's been there since the late fifties, early sixties.
Oof.
Yep. It was all, that, that was all one, uh, parcel of land, uh, and then my grandfather let us start the campground and stuff like that, so.
And where is that again?
Uh, address?
Thirteen forty-one Portland Road. It's right, uh, if you're heading towards, uh, Candy Bunk, it's right before the campground. Little white house sits back, little white barns up on top of the hill.
He's got, he's got a.
You got a J-bone.
Well, you know, the pizza place?
And he needs to.
You know, run the house pizza?
Yeah.
Right, right after.
Oh.
Same, same side, yeah.
Yeah.
Your grandfather had it with the campground.
Yeah. Yeah, that's.
I mean, that's, uh.
Yep.
Um. I usually, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Had a regroup, try to get.
Yeah.
Face unfamiliar, but I just wasn't jarred.
Yeah, it's been a while since I've been in here.
Well, I don't, I don't know about anybody. I don't have a problem with it.
No, I'm.
I think she needs it. You just have to get all of your ducks in a row.
Yeah.
You should schedule a sidewalk, right?
Yeah, we should do a sidewalk.
Yeah.
I can't, I can't do this Saturday, but.
No, weather.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have some flags out there, um, but they're, I think, they're buried in the snow right now, so, like, yeah, I don't know.
What's your, what's your general timeframe to want to do this?
They, they would like to possibly weather-wise, uh, start displaying in March, possibly all the, you know, contingent on, on weather, and I also have to do excavating and hauling in the, the materials, so.
Just, well, we could, we could do the sidewalk the fifteenth, Saturday the fifteenth, if everybody's available.
It's, um.
We don't know what the weather is gonna be bringing that against.
Yeah, we don't. We do know what this Saturday is gonna look like.
Yeah.
The Saturday's gonna be good.
Yeah.
It's Sunday.
Right.
It's gonna be.
I think it's Sunday the storms coming in, but.
No, Saturday. They said it was coming in Saturday.
Oh.
Uh, I'm good for the fifteenth.
Yep, I won't be here.
Oh.
You know, providing weather permitting.
It'll be all right.
Yeah, I think nine o'clock will be great, we, cuz it's still not light enough out at six o'clock to go wandering around.
No. So Saturday, the.
The fifteenth at nine o'clock.
At nine, at nine AM.
I move that we have a site walk, uh, at, uh, nine AM on February fifteenth.
I'll second that.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Tom McGinn, have a sidewalk on February fifteenth at nine AM. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. We will see you then.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the next one up is Solari Property Care and Excavation, a pre-app site planning proposal to add retail sales of farm raised meat, hay, firewood, Christmas trees, landscaping materials, used vehicle equipment, two partridges, a pear tree.
Hmm.
As well as other items related to self-storage. In, in other words, everything that gets left in the self-storage that doesn't get purchased.
Yeah. You're on to bait, you're on to bait.
That's where the partridge in the pear tree's.
Exactly.
You're gonna be, you're gonna be putting this right on the pro.
But there'll be no changes to the site at all, um.
Are you using the barn that's up in the, that's behind the house?
Yeah, so that's my existing shop and, uh, everything for my landscaping facility. You know, I think what's really happening here is, is like the wording on retail stuff, um, you know, we're selling landscape materials, but then the hay and, uh, and, and that was a little bit of a concern. The beef, as I understand, definitely different than what I originally came in front of you guys for, um, but the beef sales is really, I've been selling cows since two thousand fifteen, um, and I've always just done direct consumer, you know, but nowadays a half a cow, I just picked one up today, you know, it's three thousand dollars for a half a cow. You have to have enough room for three hundred pounds of meat. That's hard for the average person to take on, so I went through the process of getting a state approval to, uh, sell retail out of the shop, so I think that same frozen product that goes to a state inspected facility, it goes into a big commercial freezer, and someone can buy one package of hamburger, five hundred dollars worth, whatever they'd like, um. And you know, every single thing on this list is, is here and there, you know, I bale hay, sometimes it all sells, sometimes right now. Uh, you know, I stored some to sell, um, I put it on the side of the road, it's the honor system, hay bales, uh, firewood in a dump trailer, you know, that kinda stuff, so I think it's, I don't know how general or how specific we need to be on selling the various things that come with all the crazy things I do, but, um, I think that's, that's the plan.
So I'm stuck on this, and I'll last, ask Sam. I'm not sure doing a sidewalk would do us any good because there's no building going up, there's no construction that's gonna take place on the property. And it's just, it's, it's, it's an intensification of, of the storage facility because it's a different kind of a use. But I'm, I'm not sure how we would handle that in terms of, of the permit process.
Mm-hmm.
We, we need to have some plans, something that we can say, yeah, this is gonna work. You're gonna, all your customers are gonna come in the same way, park in the same area.
Hundred percent, yep, and, you know, again, I, I think Christmas trees is on the list, and other than Christmas trees, it could be one customer a week, it could be five customers a week. Yeah, yeah. I think, you know, my customers for self-storage will probably exceed the amount of customers for any of these other things on the list, uh. And, and right now, that property is a separate, is separate from the storage, so the storage was approved on the other address. This specific property was, I think, only approved for contract yard one or one and two, um. And that's where the office for both the storage and my landscaping business are currently.
I forgot, as you're talking, it's coming back to me that you guys are using that building for.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, for the, for the office. There's the main office for the storage facility, so you know, that's the nice thing, I have an office person sitting there anyway. Um, so, you know, it, it's got all where, same parking spaces, same customer entrances, everything's gonna be exactly the same.
So I, I forget the, the, uh, your, the, the last application would included some parking spaces?
Correct, yep.
From employees, and that's what's shown, it's, that's not new, that's existing?
Correct, yep, that's all existing. You know, the only difference from the last time I was here, when I got my first approval, that whole parking lot was supposed to be gravel. Um, I ended up paving the whole parking lot, and there's actually lined spaces, so like on that plan, those were just uh, drawn on there to be on the gravel, but now it's actually a lined parking spot.
That's even better.
Yeah.
Good, yeah.
I'm glad I did that.
So where on this plan, where are you, we're both just right in front? To have the, all your display?
Uh, there's.
Or just wherever?
No display or anything like that, the, um, the freezers, I mean, it's just frozen products.
I was thinking like the Christmas trees or.
Oh, Christmas tree, so that would just be in the parking lot area itself. You know, right now, like I have, I park firewood, it's very big. I park firewood where that parking lot kinda tees off towards Route one. But that's sort of my only area to display anything other than being, um, in the actual yard.
Right.
But, uh, but no, it'd be like Christmas trees or anything like that would be in the existing parking lot to the north side of the shop.
So how will you let people know, you know, other than the things that you leave on the side of your property, uh, through the honor system, when people take hay or firewood? How will they know that you have beef for sale, or are you gonna have some additional signage, or?
I mean, nothing other than the existing sign I have now, maybe just changing the riders or anything like that, but there'll be no new installation of any like signposts or anything like that.
Maybe you need like a sandwich board. You know, let people know what is for sale for the day.
Yeah, yeah, so we actually did have a sandwich board at the end of the driveway for the honor system for the hay bales. But that didn't last very long with people going down Route one very fast.
Yeah.
The cinder blocks only did me so good.
And then, and hence my question, do we, how do we hit? We don't have any plans. Cuz there's no, there's nothing, nothing being done to the property.
Yeah, what's, I mean, so you've got self-storage, your place, what's immediately to the north of you guys?
Uh, there's vacant property between me, then there's a right away, then there's motor land.
Okay.
Going on the same side.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to picture, you know.
Yep.
Yeah, across the streets, the ship.
Yeah, I'm like directly across the street from like Harry Martin's property and, and the boats, and then there's that little storage facility across the road and all that.
So I'm just, I'm just kinda baffled at this. Where would we go from here?
Well, I mean, I think public hearing?
Yeah, we could.
Yeah.
We could have a public hearing on, on the eighteenth.
Yeah, I mean, no. I'll need to make more out of this than it needs to be.
Yeah, I agree.
Engineering plants that's already been done.
Yeah, and then.
There's really no change.
We can just have, we can have, uh.
No, no.
If you're gonna sell.
Anything land used.
If you're gonna sell food, um, do you need, do we need some kind of guarantee that it's gonna be?
He's got all of his permits and his licenses.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I've already had, like, my site has already been, um, inspected by the state and permits already been issued and everything like that, like I've already met all the requirements for hand washing things and my freezers up.
And so we would require, require you to keep that up to date at current.
Are you processing anything there? It's all coming in, yeah.
Yeah, so, all, all this stuff that, that I would sell, um, out of this facility goes to a state inspected facility.
Yeah, and we can just get it frozen or almost froze packaging.
Yeah, I pick it up all black frozen, and it goes right into my.
Just ask Sam to write up notice of decision for, uh, the eighteenth, I would, I would imagine, cuz we're gonna do the sidewalk.
Now, do we need?
No, we don't need to, we don't need to do a sidewalk. We just need to have a public hearing on the eighteenth.
I drove by the other day, on the way to sidewalk.
Yeah, right.
House is red, right? Great, okay, it's a good color.
You know, I used to hide back there, it's been there forever, now it stands up.
Make a motion for a public hearing.
I move that we schedule a public hearing on February eighteenth. Um, for, uh, Hillview Mini Farms.
Seconded.
Is Zach a second?
No, this isn't Hillview, this is.
No, this is not.
Oh, so I'm sorry, Solari, I'm in the wrong Farms Barnes, um, yes, sorry, Solari. Zach, did you second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Motion by Susan, seconded by Zach. Have a public hearing on the eighteenth. Any discussion?
Are we gonna be able to notify any abotters or?
Will that, uh,
I'm just saying.
Oh, no, no, I, I understand that. I'm, I'm thinking let, um, I'll let you know tomorrow morning.
Two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A question, you don't have to know any, uh, anybody who's renting, uh, our storage unit, are they?
I got a couple of them left.
No, no, I mean, in case, are they considered abotters?
No, they are not.
That's what I'm trying to make.
They don't own, they don't own any of the
They don't own
You don't have anybody living in there.
I hope not. Yeah.
Got the heater.
I know, yeah. Yeah, they got an outlet in there too. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'll jump out quick.
People with battery chargers, that, that was not my worry now.
We'll look forward to seeing you in two weeks.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Chief, I didn't realize you were here. You're not, you're not on the agenda.
You just like
He likes the company.
Right, of the planning board.
Are you gonna, you're gonna be here in, uh, in two weeks on the eighteenth? Cause we're, we're gonna be discussing the ordinance on that date.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you. Other than that.
Move to drink?
We could. We're going, we're gonna have a couple of things coming up that we have to look at. Uh, Keith wants to talk to us because the, there are two two things coming up, coming up from the street point of view that the selectmen want us to hold public hearings on and make changes. He's gonna talk to us about them on the eighteenth. We've got the fire chief on the eighteenth that we've got to work up all of the ordinance to make sure that we've got everything taken care of. I, and I believe we do. Paul sent out, uh, a revision. So I believe we got all of that stuff taken care of. We're gonna have to schedule public hearings for that. I don't think there was anything else. You know, we could, we could, nah. I was gonna say we could tell the selectman we need a raise, but it won't matter.
I got my very sad W two.
Yeah.
Yep, I got mine. I'm overwhelmed.
I gotta hire a friggin' accountant.
That's right. Let me know. I'll find somebody good for you. I don't think, I don't think there's anything else that we have. Do you have anything for us, Sam?
Um, oh, the one thing is, um, so the, the plan you just signed, uh, thirteen seventy Portland Road from Craig Barton, um, that was supposed to be signed, he's, I think, gonna be coming back for an amendment because he wants to change his, his parking layout.
Oh, of course he's
Who is this? I'm not sure, but, but I, I spoke with him and he's proposing, um, reduced parking area, so we would need to come back for an amendment. So.
I'm, I'm almost there. It's a reduction. You don't need to come back and ask. Just don't let anybody park there.
Which, uh, which project is this?
Who is this?
Um, this is, uh, the automobile repair garage thirteen seventy.
That's the one we just signed.
You guys signed that?
Yeah, who's that, Bruce? That's all the stuff that we just signed tonight.
Huh?
Craig Barton.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. He, he's not bad.
Pink isn't even dry.
I would, uh, yes, I would just look at it and go
Send that down, tell him. My
We are adjourned.